This moment of silence this evening is for Mr. Frank Forthoffer. Mr. Forthoffer, the husband of a very respected individual in the district. His wife was an instructor for many years, Mary. Mr. Forthoffer was a 1946 graduate of MHS. He served his country in the U.S. military, U.S. Army. He was very, very active in the community. He was a 57-year member of the Excelsors Hook and Ladder Company. And he was in the company before I joined. And I might add that he saved me from very serious injury, or worse, in a house fire when we were in the attic. He pushed me out of the way of some falling debris from the roof which was caving in at the time. In addition to being an Excelsor, Mr. Forthoffer was very active as a member of the Horton Hospital, which was then Horton Hospital Board of Trustees, as well as Brayside Camp, and also extremely active in his place of worship, the United Presbyterian Church. So Frank was just one of those people. I never heard him complain. I never heard him raise his voice. He contributed to the city also. He owned a very prestigious shoe store, a Vansicle Shoe Store on North Street at the time. So Mr. Forthoffer contributed to the country. He contributed to the community. And he will be very much missed. Mrs. Zucks, could you please read a mission statement?
We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunity in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full opportunity, to become lifelong learners, and to become competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Zucks. Mrs. Clark, could you call the roll? Thank you very much, Mrs. Clark. Now we'll go to the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Approve of the minutes of the October 5, 2017 Board of Education meeting. May I have a...
Second.
Have that, Mrs. Clark? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Now we come to recognitions and announcements. As many people know, we do a good job of feeding our students during the week. We have a free breakfast program and a free lunch program. We need help on the weekends because there's still hunger on the weekends. So this is where our Lions Club comes in. And with us tonight is a coordinator of the "No Kid Hungry" program, Glenis Foglea, who has expanded the program. Glenis, I don't want to take anything away from you. Why don't you come on up to the mic and tell everyone what you're doing this year? Go right ahead. Thank you.
I'd like to start this time. I thank the administration, the teachers, the social workers, and your office staff because I work with them and they're wonderful. We started with Mr. Kelly and Karen at Maple Hill, and now we're working with Mrs. Creedon and Terry at Maple Hill. And at Presidential Park, it's Mr. Trinkle, and he has two Millies. And then at Carter, it's Mrs. Ellis and Kelly. And they are a phenomenal group of people. They're caring. I work hard with them, and I thank them for everything that they've done. Now, I'm not a photographer at all, but I took a couple pictures that I'd like to share with you. And I'm going to pass through the rest of them. I took them last Thursday when we did our very first backpack for this school year, the first time we ever packed 75 backpacks. And I tried to do a panoramic view, but I couldn't do it. I didn't know how to do it because I really wanted you to see this mass of food on these long tables as we're packing them, but it just didn't work. I couldn't do it. We started with Orange Cares and our county executive, Mr. Newhouse, back in 2016 in February. And that was a program that was only supposed to go on for two years. But a couple of weeks ago, we found out that we are back with Orange Cares for this school year. We're one of four schools in the district that's getting backpacks through Orange Cares. And last Thursday, a delivery truck came, and we got peanut butter, jelly, tuna fish, macaroni and cheese, juice, white milk, chocolate milk, soup, cereal, crackers. And the best thing all, we got 75 loaves of bread. I've never seen so much bread in my whole life, but every school got 25 of all of this. And then the club itself, we buy some snacks. The people in the community donate food, so they get little special things in addition to what Orange Cares gives us. Today, we finished the group, the food that Orange Cares gave us. So in another week, we'll get another delivery. But we're off and we're running, and we're having a great time, and I thank you for letting me just tell you about this wonderful program, which I love. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenis, for everything you and all the volunteers do. It's a service to the children that is very, very much needed in this community, given the poverty rate. Many thanks, and keep up the good work and keep expanding the program. We have the next recognition. We have a very accomplished musician and vocalist in the audience. I'm going to let the principal of the high school, Mrs. Sorrentino, do you want to say a few words and make a presentation?
I'm going to give it a shot.
Mrs. Gugliotta's going to do it. Okay, fine. You can introduce Mrs. Gugliotta.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Perino, Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Delmore, Pastor Williams, members of the board. Please excuse my cold. It gives me great pleasure tonight to introduce Mrs. Megan Gugliotta, who is our orchestra teacher at the high school and has been very instrumental, no pun intended, in growing our orchestra program. We have one of our phenomenal young performers with us tonight, Miss Angela Fiedler, who's been with me since Monhegan, I'm very proud to say, and who's achieved another accolade for her summer work. But I'll turn things over to Megan.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So this past summer is actually the second summer that Angela participated in the NISSA Orchestra, which is the New York State Summer School of the Arts. And students work with members of the Philadelphia Orchestra. They have, it's four weeks of intensive orchestral study and lessons in chamber groups culminating in a performance. So Angela had to submit an audition recording and was accepted, and she represented us for the second time this past summer. Did I forget anything? Angela, and here's a certificate of recognition for your honor.
Thanks so much.
Do you want to say a few comments? This is what happens when you're a star.
So yeah, this summer, I went to a camp for four weeks in Saratoga, and we worked with members of the Philadelphia Orchestra. We were able to meet with them personally in small groups of like three or four, which was really good because they're like our celebrities. Yeah, and she was a big help. She's always, you know, she's been with me since elementary school, too. So I want to thank her for helping me. And my mom, who takes me to everything. They're my biggest supporters, so thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to get a photo, everyone. Now let us proceed to our recognitions and announcements. We'll go to our recognitions, announcements, and community reports. Last week, I believe, we started at the left end of the table with Mrs. Zucks. Why don't we start? Would you like to start again? You've got a big smile on you. Go ahead, Keisha.
Yes, I always love... I'm getting used to using my vocal chops and talking, doing a lot of public speaking, so I guess by the time the end of the year, I'll be professional at this. So I wanted to make sure that we talked about the Harlem Wizards and making sure that everybody knew where to get their tickets. You can purchase tickets at the high school football games and also by going to the PTO, MHS, HS.PTO@eCSDM.org to purchase your tickets or call 646-285-2943. And you have different tickets, and tickets are also sold at the door.
Is there a link on the website? Link on the website.
Oh, and the game will be November 7. Game starts at 7:00. Doors open at 6:00.
And before we go to Mrs. Blumenau, I'd like to thank both Mrs. Blumenau and Bishop Williams for representing the board at the school board conference at Serenac Lake. And I believe you're going to report on this separately.
Are we doing committee reports today or not?
Under committee reports.
I don't know if we have...
On the agenda, so go ahead, Mrs. Blumenau. Go ahead.
I just want to say congratulations to Middletown Football for winning the Bell...
Bell?
Again. So congratulations. Four times, four years in a row. See, I thought it was three. So I'm, see, the longer I'm away with my kids, right? Yeah, I wasn't able to go to the game this year, which I don't think I've missed one, but I heard it was a great contest and good job. Go Yankees. We'll keep fighting for the Yankees. And that's really, yeah, I was at, we were at the school board conference this week. I'll talk about that later.
Thank you, Mrs. Blumenau. Mr. Casanzo.
Welcome today. Thank you.
Switch over to the... Did you want to say something, Mr. Gomez? Go ahead. Why don't we start, though, with Mr. Pierre?
I don't have anything at this time, but I've only one thing. I just want to remind the public, our staff, there is a concert tomorrow, a faculty concert in Monhegan Middle School.
Right.
It's a benefit concert to support Middletown Music Scholarship Fund. So if you please attend, it's, tickets are very cheap, $5 per ticket. I believe it's $10 for a family of four. If you can attend, please do so. Should be a great, great, great event.
Do you know what time it is?
It's at 7:00 P.M.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Pierre. And as Bishop Williams pointed out while you were discussing that conference, it's a conference at the high school this evening to benefit relief of Puerto Rico. And Mrs. Knapp? Mr. Gomez?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to report, Tuesday, the Middletown Common Council approved their resolution asking that the state finalize passing legislation that will increase penalties on vehicles that pass stop-school buses while their children are getting on and getting off. Every day, 40,000 vehicles pass a school bus loading or unloading children. I want to commend the common council, the entire common council body, the Public Safety Chair, Kevin Witt, for his leadership, Alderman Kleiner, and the rest of his colleagues for finding work done on that and sending a message to Albany on getting legislation passed. Also, I had the opportunity the week before to attend the PTO meeting at Monhegan Middle School where they were hosting a presentation by the Town of Walco Police. This presentation had to do with cyberbullying and social media dangers that affect our students. And I want to commend Principal Redonia and, again, the PTO leadership and the Town of Walco Police Chief for making this possible. It was informative. Parents were asking questions, and a wonderful experience, and it's nice to see that, something that could be replicated in the other schools. And on Sunday, at the Elks Club, the Honor Flight Meal that was done in honor of the World War II veterans that live in our county. Again, our children were shining there. The Honor Society, probably for the junior high schools, were participating in serving the meals, and it was great, again, to see the enthusiasm there by our students honoring our heroes. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. I know your daughter was one of the Honor Society participants from Monhegan.
Oh, yes. She loved it.
Yep, that's very good. Mrs. Tobiasin.
I only want to echo what Paula had to say with regards to our triumphant win over Port Jervis and maintaining the Erie Bell. I wasn't at the game. I did thank you, Kevin, for keep hosting it because I did go on to see and thought we were going to have to relinquish that bell, but it looked like it was a phenomenal game with a lot of excitement at the end. I have to commend, you know, the boys. They go out every week and they give their best. And this time, it was triumphant, and last week, it was not so good. But it, the morale that they have, to see them, you know, exit the field shaking the competitor's hand, it's all good sportsmanship, but still, to me, I think that our students need to be acknowledged for showing that and for their lack of good sportsmanship. So congratulations, and I'm glad the bell is still with us.
Would you want to say something, Mrs. Knapp?
One of the things I thought was an excellent idea was that the entire team took the train to Port Jervis, which I think was a unique thing for the new coaching staff to do and to try to put everything in together for all the students. So I thought that was a great idea.
Yes. Yes, thank you for bringing that, bringing that to the public's attention. Bishop Williams.
I don't really have much, but I do want to echo. I was at the game, so I'll echo with it. I was at the game, and to be honest, it was, it was a great, it was a great game. It was, without question, almost had me at the edge of a nervous breakdown one moment, and then the next moment, sheer joy, you know, euphoria. But it was, it was a wonderful game. And this game has been going on for so long between our two schools. To see these young, these young men display the degree of emotions at every play, to me, was, was exciting, sometimes a little overwhelming. I wanted, I wanted to yell at a couple of them and say, "Calm down," but, but they did an excellent job in winning, and so I want to commend the staff in that. I think we have a lot to look forward to this year as far as sports is concerned, even having an opportunity to work out with the basketball team. The young men, they run. They move real fast, and it's hard for me at 53 to keep up with them fast, but when we slowed the game down a little bit, I had to school them. But that's, but there, but there, I think we can look forward to having a great year of sports in all of our sports programs. And then I want to quickly, just again, reiterate what Mrs. Zuck said about the Harlem Wizards game. I want to encourage everybody to come out, please, please. It will be on, it will be on Facebook. It'll be on everything. Please, those of you that are on Facebook, share it. We want to make sure that we pack the gym out. We have, we have a local designer, a local clothing designer and businessman, Fred Williams, who is sponsoring the shirts for the team this year. Just wanted, just wanted to be a part of it. And so many things that are going on. So come on out again. That's November 7. Doors open at 6:00. Game starts at 7:00. We're looking forward to having a really good time. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Bishop Williams. Mrs. Knapp, go ahead.
I'm not organized tonight, John.
It's okay.
Are you going to mention the...
That's the first thing on my report.
Then I don't need to.
Thank you.
I just would like to thank Kevin for all his help, too.
Yep, well, he's going to come up and speak in a second or two. The, just, yeah, well, thanks, Mrs. Knapp, for bringing that up. And just echoing what Bishop Williams said, the Harlem Wizards game, interestingly enough, I brought with a number of other things from my house, a signed basketball by the Harlem Wizards. I don't know what vintage it is, but if you're going to have a joint, I'd be very willing to donate that. So you might want to do that. So if you want to do that, I'll bring that in, and you can take a look at it. Harlem Wizards, signed by the Harlem Wizards, yeah. No. I wish I could have, but I, no, didn't have the talent. But anyhow, I want to talk about our effort to help our citizens in Puerto Rico. And I want to give a big shout-out to the Middletown School community for all the work they did in collecting, collecting items, and you see a result of that on the, on the screen there. Last week, the, last, excuse me, last meeting, members of the Orange County Sheriff's Department were in, did a very professional job in explaining the needs and the procedure. So after that, I asked Kevin Witt and Bill Wilcox to sort of pull things together, and you see the result, and I know many, many people deserve credit for this. So Kevin, could you come up and just fill in the pieces? Bill, if you'd like to come up, too, that'd be fine.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Perino, District Administration, and members of the board. We really came up very big as a, as a district here. I think you're giving me a little too much credit on this. There was, there were a lot of things that were already started before these folks came up to us a couple of weeks ago. I know the Teachers Association was also collecting supplies, and that's not included in this right here. But what we did was, we got in all the buildings and put out the bins, and our people responded. And the high school had the Friends of Rachel with Shadrack St. Louis's group, and they had started a drive that they were able to add to this. And the Honor Society here, the Elementary Honor Society under Raji Leary, also did a nice job collecting supplies for us. So there was so much help that went into this that, I mean, you know, at here with Mr. Trinkle and grabbing some children who helped bring this stuff out to the cars, going to the high school with, you know, Mr. Rivera, the security guard, helping out in larking gear, getting us something to use, to carry. And then Mr. Scott, we went back and they were, they picked it up at the Buildings and Grounds section, and they dropped what they were doing, Mr. Scott did, and Mike Wagner, and we got everything sort of collaborated for them. So I don't want to, if I miss anybody, I apologize for who contributed, but just one thing I'd like to leave you with is that the woman who was here, the officer who was here, was with that gentleman who helped bring that all here, or that car, or the truck and the flatbed on the back. And we thanked her for the opportunity to do this because one of the things that we find with all of these drives, that people are very generous with their time and their efforts, is that there's the concern of the legitimacy, and these folks gave us legitimacy that we knew that everything was going to be sent to where it was going to be. And she actually thanked me by saying, "Well, we knew we needed to pull this together, and we know that Middletown would respond." And that made me feel pretty good that they thought that we could pull this all together. So I hope that answered your question. Thank you to everybody.
Come up to the mic. Thanks, Kevin and Bill Wilcox. I think everyone maybe is wondering why these items are on the table tonight. And the reason, there's a couple reasons. Number one, this is National School Board, National School Bus, I'm sorry, National School Bus Safety Week. And, you know, I have to give a shout-out to all the drivers who have the awesome responsibility of transporting our students to and from school. I'll tell you, it's a big job, and it's, it's a job that requires much skill. Now, let me just talk about Mid-City Transit in this context. First of all, we mentioned the port game. Dan Higbee donated five, donated five buses to take students, bring students to port and transport them back, four for the students and one for the parents. So Dan does quite a bit of work like that, pro bono work. Now additionally, this week, Dan is distributing to all elementary students a pencil and eraser. All our elementary students are getting these, so nice job on that. But furthermore, if you look at some of the items, this concerns a new program at MHS. But furthermore, if you look at some of the items, this concerns a new program at MHS, it's the Middies Shining Star Program, Middies Shining Star Program. And what it is, and I just found out about it a day or so ago, I think even maybe yesterday, teachers may nominate students for a referral for not bad behavior, but exceptionally good behavior. If they help other students, if they volunteer, if they pick up in the cafeteria extra items that are left there, things like that, if they're very prompt to class. So, what they do is, this is a program that was designed by Karina Acevedo and Ryan Judge. And Ryan Judge, Mr. Delmore, I had hoped was a relative of Aaron Judge, but no such luck there. He wanted to score some free tickets, I think. But, at any rate, this is a great program. Maybe we can have Karina Acevedo and Ryan Judge here some evening to explain it fully. But Dan donated, what they do, they get a star, they have their photo taken, and it's put in the lobby, and then they have a choice of items. And Dan donated a thousand items, you see here, thermoses and a little megaphone and a Middletown, Mid-City Transit, and so on. But again, this is great community support. This is what makes a school system go. Now, Kevin mentioned the Honor Society, the Monhegan. The Honor Flight Dinner was great. There were some WWII veterans who are still with us. They were there. Lou Ingraci and Rich Tyrney, and Rich is a retired US Army Ranger, they coordinating this. And I just have to give a special shout-out to Michelle Ibera and April Moran, two instructors at Monhegan. Michelle is the Honor Society Advisor, and April is the Odyssey of the Mine Advisor, but believe me, they were down there for the whole program. Michelle, very impressive, is going on maternity leave soon, and she drove down from Kingston. And I told her before the evening, I said, "Michelle, if you don't feel well, you don't have to, don't feel you have to push yourself," but yet she took that responsibility, the initiative of coming down. April Moran stayed with the group until after 6:00, when the last student was picked up. And, you know, they worked hard, and I just have to read the names of the students who participated in this, so just bear with me a minute. So here's the students, and I may mispronounce some names. Kyla Aviles, Yasmin Elrafi, Abigail Gomez, Ivan Hernandez, Alexis Herrera, Kimberly Kelly, Talia Martin, Brandon Mays, Jalisa Ocasio, Clara O'Neilis LeRae, Jaylen Pitt, Nataly Rodriguez, Natalie Rodriguez, Patricia Sekor Blama, Dejanel Sancho, Alexandra Target, Ania Williams, Jonaya Williams, Madison Witt, Emily Wolfenholt, Anastasia Yopar, and Stefan Yopar. So, these kids, they gave up their whole afternoon to help, and really, they worked very hard. So, that's about it. I also want to compliment the District Attorney's Office and County Attorney's Office. They presented a seminar on sexting and cyberbullying at the Middletown High School for Parents, and a letter of appreciation was sent, as it was, to the Sheriff's Department for Puerto Rican Aid. And I think we can go on now to... Okay, I'm sorry, Bishop Williams, you go right ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say one thing. As you can see, I'm wearing pink tonight.
We're wearing pink.
And Mr. Perino is also wearing pink. He has his pink on, wearing it in remembrance of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This month has been set aside to bring awareness to this disease and to raise funds for the prevention, well, research into its cause, and for the prevention of this disease. And so we just want to remember all of those that have been affected by breast cancer, but cancer as a whole, it's an enemy. It's an enemy. And so we, many of us have been affected by it in our families. Every one of us probably knows somebody that has, at some point, been touched by it. And so we just want to bring awareness to it until this disease has been eradicated. And so, that's why we're wearing pink. I've got my pink socks on, I've got my pink tie on, I've got my pink cufflinks on. So I've got it all on. Real men wear pink, they, real women wear pink. So, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that I said that in public. And we also remember, in our thoughts and prayers, all those that have been touched by this disease. Thank you.
And Bishop Williams collects watches. It's not a pink watch tonight, but it's a very, very impressive watch also. See, now we come to our opportunity to address the board. If you'd like to address the board, please sign in at the podium. Four minutes, and we do not dialogue. Alderman Kleiner, a graduate of Middletown High School. Nineteen watts, sixty watts?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two, I thought it was one or two.
That was our Middies undefeated season. And that's a source of pride that stays with you, it really does. Good evening, Superintendent Eastwood, or President Perino, and members of the board, administrators. I have been introduced, but I am Jerry Kleiner, Second Ward Alderman, and I'm always happy to say, we are now in the Second Ward, and it's a source of pride that Presidential Park School is here. But I'm also president of the Middletown Historical Society, and Frank Forthoffer was a long-term, long-term member and supporter of the Historical Society. We had our annual meeting and luncheon this past Saturday, and that's where we got the word, and the room was in shock. A lot of us who remember Van Sickle fondly, and so many of the things he did, so he will be missed. His ilk are not replaceable. Also, listened to the port game on Wall Radio, I'm glad Wall is back, and I congratulate the Middies on keeping the eerie bell here. I mean, Middie pride, and I see it in the way that we didn't sum yours back, and it's back, and I thank you for that, and congratulate you. As long as you've got that bell, you had a good season, so go Middies. But the reason I wanted to come down tonight is, I wanted to thank Kevin Gomez, and I wanted to thank President Perino and Mr. Crescendo. Kevin has been a great liaison from the school board to the common council. He's been very actively involved, and we really appreciate his input. We're happy to support raising the penalties for passing school bus. We see it all too frequently, absolutely should be zero tolerance for it, and that's the way to address it. When Mr. Gomez was not here, Mr. Crescendo, Mr. Perino came to this council meeting and did a wonderful job on filling us in in what's been going on in the school, and the improvements that have been made, and the technology, and the programs. And really, all you have to say is, when you have people wanting to move to Middletown so that their kids can be in the Middletown School System, I think that's really all you need to know. So I thank you all, and I congratulate you, and I will think of that as I pay my school taxes at the end of the month. You're doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
I think it's important to mention the quest of the board to consider the bill that's before the legislature regarding bus safety. Understanding two things, it was in last year's legislative session, the session closed without any action on that bill. And because we haven't started the new legislative session when they will pick that bill up, because they do roll over for two years, we will be, the Board of Education will be considering supporting that bill in January sometime, once the legislature is back in session, and it's a fresh reminder of the legislature, of its importance. Jerry, go ahead.
Thank you, and I did bring that up because the legislative process had passed the Senate, but in committee in the Assembly, and we had that with our fireworks bill and our social host law, that you really have to get them moved out of committee, and then they get sent as a batch to the governor's office. And so it does take vigilance, and we will be, continue to talk to Haley and Gunther, and anyone else we can to try and keep that process moving. Thank you.
Thank you again. Any other individuals who would like to address the board this evening? Hey, seen none? We have students here, would you like to say something? You want to come up and say something? No? There's another opportunity later in the meeting if you change your mind. Let's go on to personnel, the Personnel Memorandum. If there's no objection, can we approve 9A instructional, 9B non-instructional, 9C Motion? Second? Did you get that, Mrs. Clark? Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And Jerry, before you're leaving, Mrs. Tobiasin is also a member of the Liaison Committee, so if one person can't make it, somebody else will be there. Now, Mr. Coach is in the audience, and he's going to give us a summary, a 10-minute summary of the new athletic code.
Not yet.
Not yet?
I got something on the superintendent's board.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, it's the only thing I saw on there.
That's all right. I think that some of the board members might be commenting later on, I'm not sure about the school board's convention. And I think a lot of people might remember last year when Paula had suggested that we tried to make a better presence at the convention, and we said that we would, and we did.
Yes, we did.
So I don't, you know, what I'd like to do is maybe give you an opportunity to talk, Pastor, you were there as well, and a little bit about that convention and our people being up there and having a presence. But before they do, one of the things I want to have a conversation with the community about is, we have a newly developed program book that talks about a lot of our programs across the district, and this came out wonderfully. It was well-done, really is pretty substantial. But inside this, also something that we want to celebrate, because we're probably one of the very few districts in the country that is recognized as being a high-needs district, where we've been able to, over the last 13 years, it has not been something that occurred in a year, or two, or three, four, or five. It's been 13 years of hard work by our staff, this Board of Education, and this community to support the programs that are inside this school district. And one of the things that we've done, as you can see up here, I'll talk into the mic here, is that we are one of the very few districts, high-needs districts, that's actually closed the performance and graduation gap between ethnicities as well as those in poverty and those not. I can't tell you when, I actually was at an Equity Conference last week, and when people heard and saw these charts, they were really wowed by the fact that somebody actually has closed, in our case, I don't talk about closing the gap, we did that, we eliminated the gap. There is no distinction anymore between students of any ethnicity, being, having performance or graduation rates that are more superior to anybody else. Every ethnicity is represented by performing at the same high levels. Additionally, because we are also a very high-poverty district, where 78% of our kids come from homes in poverty, we've also closed the gap between students who are in poverty and those that are not, so even those students in poverty are performing at excellent levels like everyone else. The additional thing that you want to notice up here is, not only have we eliminated the gap, but over the last 13 years, we have had a 38% increase in graduation, cohort graduation rates. We've gone from 51% to 89%. And again, that, when those kinds of statistics were communicated last week, there were gas, actual gas in the audience. In addition to that, as you can see, back in 2003, 2004, for those students on free-introduced lunch, only 59% of them were graduating at that time, and this last cohort that we've talked about is 89% graduation rate. So, it's not just about the technology in this district. We are a leader, a national leader in educational technology and the use of technology in this district. It's not just about blended learning. We're a national site that's recognized for blended learning, and we received over 100 guests last year alone coming through the school district to look at our programs. It's also about what's happening in the high school. And as you all know, we recently opened some new floors and classrooms with very significant technology in them, referred to as collaborative learning spaces, because that's really what our graduates need, is experience in collaborating with others around solving problems, and our kids will be doing that. The other thing that I want to talk about is, all of these wonderful things, as I said, have occurred when there was a significant change in our demographics of students. We saw a higher, almost doubling of students in poverty, as I mentioned, up to 76, 78% of our population. We saw our minority population double over those 13 years to 84, 86% at the same time. And I bring these statistics up because in this district, it doesn't matter who you are, what your color is, or what your financial background is. You are still going to have a learning environment where education is real, and all students have the capacity, and in fact, do perform quite well, as I've shown on the graphs here. Additionally, that you should know about these kids, not only are 89% of them graduating now, and we hope within the next two to three years will be in the low 90 percentiles, but over 60% of our graduates every year now are going on to college. This graduating class that's coming up, over 40% of them will graduate with college courses, because we're a unique school district. because we're a unique school district in this state, where college courses are offered and students, regardless of their financial capacity, can take those courses for free. And they've responded in droves. Last year's graduating class, 36% graduated with college courses. More than half of those kids came from homes of poverty. 84% of those kids were minority. This school district, this community and Board of Education has worked very hard to establish a school district that regardless, as I said before, of the color of your skin, what your zip code is, and what your financial background is, or home situation is, you have educational programming that will take you anywhere you want when you graduate. And I want to point that out, I think it's time that we celebrate this, because we've only found this data out fully over the last month, and we're going to be communicating it out. It's also in this new program book that I talked to you about, the charts are right there for you as well. That chart, or this document will also be up on our website as well, for folks to read. So congratulations. In addition to that, I guess if I can take the time and just ask the pastor and Paula, if you want to have a few comments about the school board's presentation by our, our faculty and staff and administration.
To come back and say, you know, if we could teach what we're doing, if we could bring what we're doing out into the, into the state, you know, we've, we've got this, these incredible tools and we have these incredible administrators and staff that are doing such wonderful work, we should be sharing that information and, you know, most of it is, you know, pride and, and feeling very proud of the fact that we're doing this. And many times I go to, I've been going for five years, and, you know, feeling like, you know, we're doing this, we're, we're doing that, or we're, we've got this going. So it was really terrific to have our contingency, a very skilled, very high-level contingency there as well, to talk to what we're doing. The, our booth, we had a double booth on the convention, on the convention showroom floor. Many schools do present, several schools present, mostly it's businesses and services, but our staff was there in Manning and, and they were really doing such a wonderful job of communicating what we were doing and all of the wonderful programs we have here. So I just want to say to them, thank you for, for taking the time and, and doing that. It was terrific. I also wanted to just say that I had the opportunity to see, I had the opportunity to see Linda Brat's presentation about transitioning students who are new to country. And that was wonderful, very, really so insightful, what a great program in helping these students to get, just, they're not thrown into a sea of kids. They're, it's individual learning and support so that they can get up to speed before they're just transplanted. So it really was amazing to see the details of that, because although I'd heard about it and I know about it and we talk about it, to see all the data and the, and really like the, the way it's supporting these kids and the opportunities that we're giving. So that was, that was wonderful. Unfortunately, because of just conflicts with other, with other obligations that I had while I was there, I wasn't able to see the other two presentations, which I would have loved to have seen and, you know, I'm sure you can talk to what those presentations were. I know we had a technology, a presentation on technology and what we're doing in technology. And we also had a presentation on, what was the third one was?
Two-year kindergarten.
Two-year kindergarten, which of course we're doing. You know, what's really, what really hit home for me is, in looking at that slide, it's not only that we're bringing certain pockets of our culture up, you know, we're just bringing them up to each other, but we're bringing the whole community up. That line is a diagonal line up. And it's, that's where we're going, you know, we're, we're going up, but it doesn't happen overnight. It takes time, it takes everyone's energy, everyone's participation. And so I'm very proud of that. And I, I think you're right, the gasps are there and, and we are well-known in the community. I can just say that I don't think I've ever had a prouder moment than sitting in, when Mary Ellen Ilya, who's the Commissioner of Education, from the, from the, from her podium was speaking about where New York, where we're going, where New York State Education is going and, and some of the big changes that are happening. And she cited Middletown from the podium to say that it's happening in Middletown and that she had just been here to witness it firsthand and that it can be done. While at the same time, all those numbers are going up, 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 our funding has gone, had been going down, 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 which scares me a little bit, because yeah, it can be done on less money somehow. But what we could do if we had all of the funding that was, we should have. So I, on one hand, you know, all of our, all of our success, and we're out there and it's wonderful, but what we, what we're going to be doing in the future is just as important. So keep up the good work. The rest of the conference, I'll, I'll let Pastor Williams talk about what his perceptions were of our school district.
We're just, right now, we're just talking about, about the presentation from the, from the district. But I, I also want to add to that about how proud I was to be a part of, to be a part of Middletown and how proud I was to have our contingency that was there. The table, the, the table, the booth was, was outstanding. Many, it drew a lot of attention and, and we had extremely knowledgeable, experienced individuals that were there sharing information. And I do want to add that I, I took, I took many of, of these booklets and took the opportunity to hand them out to various people around the convention. And, and there's a lot of excitement about Middletown, especially based around the misconceptions of Middletown. For those of us that have grown, that have grown up here, we know that this is no longer the same, same city it was, or the same area that it was, you know, 25, 30 years, years ago, and perhaps not even 15 years ago. And, and so these numbers that we saw up here, as relates to the graduation rates, are extremely reflective of what our community is. And so being able to, to, to see our people there in action, to, to go to, to go to the sessions, again, Linda Brat did an excellent job. She did an excellent job in her, in her session that we were able to attend. Just a sense of pride at, at being able to see Middletown recognized. And again, it was everything within me when the, when the Commissioner of Education, it was everything to hold myself in, you know, contain myself. When she mentioned Middletown, I almost jumped, I was about to say, "Yes!" You know, I, I almost jumped up and, and everybody that was around me, everybody that was around me, I was sitting with some of the fellow, fellow members of the Brat Caucus, and they all looked at me, they all looked at me like that. And, and it was very, really exciting just to get that mentioned. And so Middletown is on the rise. Middletown is, is becoming, is, is a place where people want to follow what we're doing. And I'm excited to be a part of that and more excited, more excited that our staff and our team and our people were able to go up and to be a part of that convention. I've been going for five years now as well. I took a break last year, but for the last five years, to be able to go there and, and now to say, "Well, listen, you need to know more about Middletown, go down there to the, go down there to the, to the expo and stop by our table." And you'll see, you'll be able to see and hear firsthand from the people that are doing it. You'll be able to see and hear firsthand what we're doing and how we're doing it. So kudos, congratulations to, to everybody that went. We had a wonderful time. And even, even, and I'll add this, even just to be there with them outstanding individuals, period. Just outstanding individuals, period. Wonderful, wonderful people. And it's one, it's, it's a great thing to be aligned and to be in relationship with such wonderful, outstanding individuals. So congratulations.
By the way, Rich and Mike were both there as well.
Just to say a few words to embellish some of the comments, and I thank both of you for being there, and I understand that most of you on the board would be there if you didn't have other commitments. So it's truly a team approach, yet there were people that made some very good sacrifices to be there with family commitments and to be there because of the importance to shout out, as Mrs. Bloomingale said, what we're doing here in Middletown. But I think it's equally important to understand all of the people behind these presentations that made this possible, and that is firstly, the teachers. Yes, Ms. Trapp did a wonderful job explaining a day in her two-year kindergarten class, but there are several other two-year kindergarten teachers equally doing that same passionate work. Similarly, Dr. Eastwood mentioned the, the document here, the individuals that were behind that to write it. The print shop staff putting that together to make sure that we have this to shout out to the state of New York. So it is such a pleasure to be part of the team and certainly the Board of Education, not because you're sitting here, because of truthfulness, this can't be done without your support and understanding to have these initiatives take place. The classroom practitioners, each of them, those who support the long hours that students need for reinforcement, interventions, reinforcements and enrichment, all of those go behind all of these numbers. As Dr. Eastwood very clearly said, this doesn't happen overnight, it doesn't happen with one silver bullet, so to speak. It's countless hours of planning, trial, error, failure, learning what to do differently when you fail, to come up with something that's successful. And I think we are on more than the road to right recovery here, it's about sustainability. And you have given us the opportunity and the tools to sustain this as we step into the next century with our rooms. I already have received five superintendents' requests to visit our school districts, five, some of them very close by, some far, inside the state of New York. So I do think hats off to everyone in our educational community and to all the parents that support us. So thank you very much.
Dave, come on up.
Well, as well as in Middletown, the bell is where it needs to be, four years in a row, and the Yankees are up 3-2. So we're in good shape here. Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Delbaro, Mr. Tuttle, President Perino, I'm here as the chairperson for the Wellness Committee. And we're going to have to, we're going to go through our policy in periodic review. We have to annually do this as a committee and, but there are a lot of great things that are happening within the community, within the committee. Extremely proud of the work that we have done last year and what we're going to continue to do. Just a little bit of an overview of the Wellness Committee. We are, we're formed to promote healthy lifestyle choices for students, our District Wellness Committee, which was established in 2005, consists of teachers, administrators, community members, board, board members, healthcare providers and community agencies. The committee meets two to four times per year and serves to review wellness-related issues as they affect the students in the Middletown City School District. Why are we here? We have to manage our wellness policy. There's an annual notification that we have to go through that actively informs our families in public of any updates or changes to the content. The triennial progress assessment, which we accomplished last year as a committee in 2016, '17 school year, which we reviewed the entire policy in its entirety. I did leave for you on the table that we have the one document, that is the older document and a new document that we're moving towards. And obviously, we're seeking Board of Education approval as you have to approve all changes within the wellness policy. So as we move and kind of explain the wellness policy document, the new, the new document that we created and revised and replaced the old document, it is now more user-friendly, it's digital, includes hyperlinks to relevant websites. Many of them are with Healthy Schools Program, online tools, USDA, National Standards, Alliance for Healthier Generation, Smart School Snacks, Smart Snacks Program. So it is a document that we're going to be able to easily modify and adjust as we move along in the future. The old document was antiquated and it really was not what we wanted to see here moving forward. So the committee did a great job reviewing the entire document and revamping the whole entire document, which you have in front of you. If you're flipping through the, the document, basically we have all the blue links, you can click on any one of those links and it brings you to the pertinent websites. So as our parents and administrators and teachers utilize this document, it's going to be one that's going to be meaningful and relevant. Obviously, we're moving to be more visible and accessible. So we're moving to put this on our webpage, the main district page, as well as we're going to go to all of our individual schools. The current document that we have is buried on the Athletic, Athletic Department website, not really the appropriate placement for it. So we're going to be moving to, to get that accomplished. Committee of Goals that we have attained, we created, we feel that we created a policy that works for Middletown. We're fully integrated with all the new federal and state standards pertaining to nutrition, school meals, health education and physical activity. We are a bronze level school of distinction, as applied by the Alliance for a Healthier Generation. So with the, with this piece, as, after we get approval, we're a bronze level, but we're working to get our gold level standard. We have developed in the last year with, with our nutritional program, after-school snack program, which we've instituted. Students involved in sports, intramurals and clubs receive free meals after school, including summer months. It was a great program and we got it into full swing this, this summer. Where we're going to head this year in 2017, '18 with the committee, we have nutritional education, we want to provide nutrition lessons after school that model encourage support healthy eating habits, open to all students, but we're trying to mandate the student athletes, we're trying to get that prepared this year. We want to increase our physical activity, we want to provide more opportunities before, during and after school for students, as well as we would like to do that, do the same thing for our staff. We do have a subcommittee, which is headed by Craig Olenichak, you know him by TC, he's going to be focusing on, on this program to provide activities for our staff as we, as we look to get ourselves healthy. Continuing with our committee goals, we want to continue with our community partnerships, continue to seek out meaningful relationships that support our students and families. We want to support and promote community health and family engagement activities. The one that we have struggled with as a committee, and I think that we're, it's really kind of a cultural piece, is the celebrations, rewards and fundraising. We want to be more mindful when we have celebrations in our school with bringing all the sweets and the cupcakes, we're used to that as a, as a society, but we're looking to try to change that in the coming years, as well as fundraising. We have a lot of fundraisers out there that are really not that appropriate as far as, you know, the, the donut sales and the candy fundraisers that you're aware of. So the committee's got a lot of work there to do. So that's where we're heading. Those are the, the new policy you have in, in front of you, is what we're seeking for approval so we can kind of move forward with our committee. approval so we can kinda move forward with our committee in, in a direction that we would like to see happen. So are there any questions for the wellness policy review?
Why don't we just go around the table and we'll start with Mr. Pierre? Linda?
Linda's our newest member, by the way.
One of the things that is difficult for us in this process is it's always ongoing. We have to always be looking for the next thing, the, the new theory. But I really think we've done well. I mean, we now are feeding the students free through the school. We have after-school athletes. They have a snack that they're allowed to have either before, but usually it's after, whatever their athletic issue is. And it's, it's creating that caring and helping that sometimes our students need. The after-school snack is a sandwich, a juice, a milk and a fruit. So it's not like they're going to the candy machine and getting the Reese's, Reese's. Although I do say the candy bar fundraisers are an easy one.
They are easy, but...
It's a very easy fundraiser.
Fruit, fruit.
Yeah, fruit, I'm not sure how we...
Florida, we're gonna support the citrus crop.
Yeah. But I, I think this is, this is excellent, but it is ongoing. It's gonna have to always be, you know, looked at, changed a little bit, but good job.
It is. I'm proud of the committee. I think the committee did a lot of work last year and, you know, we have a really solid document here moving forward.
Mr. Gomez, anything?
Good evening. My question is with respect to the celebrations and rewards. What, what will be some of the healthy party ideas that will be offered to parents? I know that's part of our school tradition. When my children have their birthdays, we do bring the cupcakes.
It is, and we understand that. We're gonna be working towards that. That's part of the gold distinction that we get. Right now, we're currently at a bronze. That is a cultural piece that's a, you know, entrenched here in Middletown, and I think that we're gonna be working to, towards that. But some of the healthier snacks are, you know, are embedded in the, in the, in the document. So if a teacher wants to provide that for their parents, they can click on the link and they can share it with their parents, as if they're gonna bring in fruits or vegetables and also different 100% juice, you know, beef jerky. There's a, there's a whole list of things that they can bring in to, as opposed to the sweet or, you know, even the allergy, the peanuts and...
Like for birthday celebration, will parents will still be able to bring in...
Right now, yes. I mean, that's just where we're gonna be heading. We're gonna try to head down the road in 2017, 2018 to start the discussion within the committee. We would like to break out that conversation, obviously, to every one of the buildings to try to get that. I think where we probably would start, instead of going to the celebrations, I think we would probably start with the fundraising. I think that's a, probably an easier chunk to manage as opposed to going directly into the celebrations. It is, it's a tough one. It's not just tough in Middletown, it's tough across the country. So this is not saying that you cannot at this point, because we have language in there that says we would like to suggest that you do this. It's a suggestion, it's not mandating at this point.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's part of our culture. I mean, of course, I think the healthy meals is the right track, but then a birthday's not every day, although it's 30 birthdays.
Sure, in moderation, sure.
Mrs. Tobiasin?
Just a couple of comments. I really haven't had time, David, to digest all this, so I assume if we do have any questions, we can relay it back to you.
Absolutely, sure.
I just wanna comment on the committee members. I'm looking at it, and it goes from community members to a principal, to department chairs, to our nurse practitioners, the community liaison. We have PE teachers, our board member, Linda, Christine Brinkerhoff from the rec department, and even the Orange County Department of Health. So it seems to be a committee that's very well diverse and can bring a lot to this committee. And as I said, I really tried to peruse it very quickly. If I do have any questions, I'll just get them back to you and with an answer.
Absolutely, we'll be glad to get even answers.
But they're a thorough job, and I commend you for it.
We have, we have, we're still looking for a student. One student graduated that was on the committee, so we're gonna get another student and another, another parent. We'd like more parents to be involved in, on the committee too. So if a parent is, if you know of a parent that is interested, they're more than welcome. We'd like to have them be part of the committee.
Bishop Williams?
I really have, I have made a good job. It's, it's excellent. I think this is great work. I was gonna say, and, and you said it exactly what was in my mind, is that when it comes to the celebrations and the things of that nature, you know, everything is fine in moderation, you know, in moderation. So, and, and it's real hard to, it's real hard to change a culture, a cultural, you know, staple that's there.
Sure.
It takes, it takes a lot of time, and, and that's something that you can't mandate. That's something that you get, you could suggest and kinda, kinda push toward it. But again, in, in moderation, I mean, I, I'd like to think that I personally eat healthy, but every once in a while, I like, I like a, a cupcake, you know?
I think we all do.
Or two. But, you know, but...
Yeah, I think, you know, like I said, I think the fundraising portion of it as a goal that we're looking to move towards to get the communication out there about what are the healthy choices at this point, I think that's where we're gonna start. Try to really promote that, as well as trying to steer, whether it's a coach or a teacher, instead of rewarding with a Snickers bar, maybe we're rewarding with something else.
Well, you know, it, what's good about it, what's good about it is, and, and again, you said, as far as the culture is concerned, the only way to change a cultural, cultural staple like that is, is to, to hit the kids while they're young. You know, you can't change, you know, you can't teach an old dog new tricks, they say, you know? But, you know, if you catch them while they're young and they're starting to learn, and they're starting to learn now, you can change their habits, habits now so that they'll go, have more healthy eating habits and, and their mindset should be changed. You're pouring, scripturally, scripturally we say it like this, you're putting, you're putting, you're not putting new wine into an old wine skin. You know, you're putting, you're putting new, new wine into a new wine skin, a new mindset. So I think that you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Can I come back with one thing, John, just quickly?
Go ahead.
One of my concerns would be, and I guess you've opened a can of worms when you're talking about the birthday parties and things like that, because now you have to face children coming to school, young children, you know, diabetics, celiac, peanut allergies and that, and, and all that also has to be taken into consideration. So although folks wanna do to celebrate an auspicious occasion, there still has to be some control, healthy.
Absolutely. So you have the other options that would be available as well. That's another great way to start, as well as communicating out, you know, the allergies and diabetes and stuff like that.
And as I said, you know, I have one that has to be gluten-free, celiac. So you don't think somebody that's 10 years old or eight years old when it's diagnosed, still...
We recognize that one as gonna be the most difficult challenge for the committee, and that's, you know, communication and discussions have to start first before a movement is gonna be made. And that was a big stumbling block within the committee.
Well, we got Nurse Linda there, she'll help.
That's right. And Tierra Oliver, she's on the committee too, so we're covered there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tobiasin. Mr. Crescendo?
This is another piece and an integral part of what makes this district so great. I remember when I was teaching, maybe about 10 or 15 years ago, they took the soda machines away from the students and the sugary snacks, and then a short time later, they got rid of it out of the entire building, so that included the faculty. And, you know, I was a little disappointed by that, but I realized, and honestly, over a short period of time, I felt better at the end of the day, because I would have maybe two cans of soda or something like that. So, you know, you're right on it. And, you know, basics, a healthy child will become a healthy adult, and someone mentioned down there, if they learn this now, it becomes a habit, and it won't be missed later on down the road. So thank you, you and your committee and everything, for all the great work you're doing.
Thank you.
Mrs. Blumenau?
Thank you.
It will also be a revenue generator for the district.
Oh, I shouldn't roll into that.
Yes, this is, this is no easy task at all. There's so many things that you have to take into consideration. As you were talking, which I know, again, that the one thing that came to my mind was just, and even as you were talking, price point. You had said, what was it, beef jerky?
Right.
And I, and I just said to myself, well, there's a $7 price point there between a bag of chips and beef jerky, you know, like, it's like, that's $7, you know? Like my kid said, oh, mom, can I go get a bag of beef jerky and...
That's definitely a concern, absolutely.
Bag of, so, you know, like I said, you guys are doing a wonderful job, and as I know, it's gonna take some time to iron out all the kinks, but thanks for everything that you're doing.
You're welcome.
Okay, go ahead. One more question.
Bishop Williams, at, I think, beginning with the younger generation, you are changing, you are working on transforming a, the mindset for a healthier future. And I guess, you know, all moderation's good, but it's learning the moderation, it's teaching them, okay, that difference. And I think going forward, they'll be able to enjoy the celebration moments, but at the same time overall, learn that for a conditioned time in this season.
I agree, and I, you know, I think that's another one of our discussion points in the committee, was to really look at breaking out, instead of having a central committee, which we're gonna continue to have, but also break out to an elementary committee in each building, middle school committees and a high school committee, so they can deal with their own issues internally and then do more of the global pieces with the central committee. So we're heading in the right direction with the committee, and we're, you know, we're mandated to have the wellness policy. It's a great policy, and I think that we just enhanced the policy that we had to make it more available to our parents, teachers and, you know, and our students, to make them more healthier.
Thank you. Just one quick question for me. I, I'm glad to see, Dave, that you have a, an assessment of the program in here. How did you decide on a three-year assessment, says at least every three years? How was that decision made?
Well, that, that's part of the, you know, we're mandated to have the wellness policy. So it's part of the federal guidelines that we follow. So the triennial assessment is through that. So this was our year to kinda, you know, look at the documents. So when we all looked at our document, it was clear that, you know, you have the document in front of you. It was just a PDF document that was just on our website. So we wanted to make that document really come to life, and I think we achieved that. So, so we're mandated to do that through, through the wellness policy.
Thank you. And you're going to be the person in charge of the evaluation?
Yes, I was, if you remember, Darling McDonough was the first chairperson for the Wellness Committee back in, I believe, '04, and I came on in '05, but I became the chair in, I believe, '07, '08, and we were able to work through multiple generations of the, of the, of the old document. But now that we're in, we're, we're digital, we wanted to, we wanted to be in line with the rest of the district and what we're doing with technology. So I think we've accomplished that.
Thank you so much. Really, the document demonstrates a lot of hard work.
Yeah, I commend the committee. They did a tremendous job, and I'm, I'm proud of the work that we, we were able to accomplish last year and looking forward to the future.
Thank you.
Okay, we also have one other presentation. I know it's a little bit long, but I have, we also have another document, kind of in the same light of the wellness policy. It's our athletic, Interscholastic Athletic Handbook. And the old document that you have in front of you, it says Middletown Public School Student Athletic Participation Form. That was part of our old document. Once again, it was a PDF document that was placed on our athletic site, and we, we felt there was a need to update all of our rules and regulations. We've had our rules and regulations, you know, in our student handbook, in our participation form, had most of our rules and regulations kinda in two or three different places, our code of conduct, athletic, or our student handbook, and then our participation form. If you look at the PowerPoint slide, this one is, kinda gives us a background information on where we, where we were. In 2014, there was a need, and a need was identified to revise the current documents that we, we currently have. In 2015, we organized an athletic handbook committee, organized with many of our coaches that we put a, you know, volunteers from our coaching staffs from across the fall, winter and spring. 2016, we created our first athletic handbook. It was shared out with, to all of our coaches for input. So we took the feedback in 2016, revisions, deletions, corrections, and cross-referenced our athletic, or student handbook, our participation form and our code of conduct. And then last year, if you remember, I came to you as a board, and we had our first Board of Education review with feedback. We took that feedback, went back to the coaches to get a review and a consensus. And in 2017, we had, we had our legal counsel review and give feedback. Modifications were made in 2017, and a final consensus from our head coaches was at the end of the school year last year, and now we're sitting in front of you now, seeking Board of Ed approval for the new Interscholastic Athletic Handbook for our student athletes and parents. So the purpose is really to provide our student athletes and parents with the necessary knowledge and tools to be successful participants within our athletic system. We really wanted to consolidate all our rules, regulations and resources into one meaningful, user-friendly document. And really proud once again of, of the committee that was together, of our head coaches, modified coaches, JV coaches, coming together, deciding on the philosophy, the athletic mission statement, the goals and objectives of our program. And it was really created by our coaching staff, and we, we had the buy-in that we need to move forward. All of our, all of our rules and regulations are state, regional and local leagues that we're affiliated with. We have congruence with, with New York State Public High School, Section 9 Athletics, OCIAA. These are the leagues and affiliations that we have locally, regionally and through our state. So the guidelines for all of our athletic eligibility, transfer rule, APP is our Advanced Placement Prosperance, used to be selective classification, and our disqualification policy with, with the state of New York, as well as Section 9. These are all, these are all pieces that are embedded into the new document consolidated so that when, the idea is to have a night in the fall, winter and spring, to bring all of our parents together with their, with their son or daughter, and have a, almost like a rules interpretation meeting for our parents and, and kind of, you know, to, you know, have, have the parents come to a meeting so they can get all the rules and regulations of the program. of the program. So, many, we have many different, as you peruse through the document, we have many, you know, health and medical pieces that are embedded into the document, becoming medically certified. That's our physical process, our concussion management protocol, our return-to-play protocol, the risk factors in sports are all kind of embedded in the health and medical areas within the new Athletic Code of Conduct, or Athletic Handbook. The one big piece that we really did focus on, which we, which we're really proud of, is the conduct of an athlete. What our athletes do on the field, off the field, in the classroom, and in the community. This piece, I can't stress enough, we've had great conversations as a coaching staff, and we feel that this is the backbone of our new Athletic Handbook moving forward. We really want to create a full package, student, athlete, and they, they're going to know that what they do on the field, off the field, in the classroom, in, in the community matters. And that's the, the point that I think that the new handbook is going to help our parents and our students understand that. Our academic eligibility guidelines, they're there, but basically, to keep it short, it's really a proactive piece to keep our kids engaged and passing while they're involved in their sport. If they're failing one and they're identified, they have to do academic progress report sheets that they're handed into the academic eligibility coordinator. And then, we, we identify kids that are failing one or more sports. If you're failing one, you're completely identified, you have to go to academic study hall during the lunch period, and then, they have to seek out academic help to get them from, to get them to pass their classes. If they're continuing to fail two classes or more for an extended period of time, we do take competitions away, but we don't take, we don't remove the carrot. We let the kids continue to practice with their teams, we don't abandon them, and we continue to seek out and get the support that's needed so that they can become fully eligible again through the review process with our academic eligibility coordinator and the teachers. So, it's an ongoing discussion between the coaches, teachers, academic eligibility coordinator, and myself. Program is working great for the past, I would say, I want to say, nine years now, I think it's been in place, nine, 10 years. So, I think that we're in great shape here, but the program is fully detailed in, in the book. Another big piece that we, we feel is another big backbone of the, of the handbook, is our sportsmanship policy. The Middletown City School District Interscholastic Athletic Program is committed to promoting the proper ideals of sportsmanship, ethical conduct, and fair play at all sporting events. This goes for our athletes, coaches, parents, and spectators. Extremely important. We all know Newt Rockne, what he said, he said it best, "One man practicing good sportsmanship is better than 50 others preaching it." So, coaches are buying into that statement from Newt Rockne, and it's really, the, the pieces that are flowing through the sportsman, you know, through the whole handbook, sportsmanship pieces are, they are embedded throughout the entire document. Bear with us here. So, we feel like our highlights of the, of the Athletic Handbook, we have a consolidated, comprehensive document. We clearly have great resources for the Eligibility Center for the NCAA. The hyperlinks for team schedules and directions are in there so that when a parent goes to our website, they can pull this document down, they can work within the document, they can go right straight to the Eligibility Center, they can go right straight to the OCIAA, they can dial down directly to their team. If they're on modified sports, they can get their student schedules, they can find out the directions of where they're going, if they're going to Monroe Middle School, if they're going to go to O'Neill Middle School, or high school, wherever their team is playing, they can find the directions right on this site. We have all our state section and league website links directly onto the document. We also have our athletic Twitter link for Middletown Athletics. We have our travel release form, that's another big, big form that the parents utilize throughout the year. And again, I think the big highlight is where we're going to take the fall, winter, and spring parent meetings, and we're going to start moving all this information out, because it is a big document. So, it's going to take time for not only our students, but our parents to kind of digest and go through this. So, as an athletic director, we're going to, we're going to have meeting nights, and then, I foresee having one general session, and then breakout sessions for the individual coaches to meet their parents. So, the major changes within the document are, we added a social media clause in there. So, we're, we're in the age of, every college has it, many high schools have it now, where you see the kids that are utilizing, we want them to utilize social media, but we want them to do it appropriately. So, there's, there's pieces in regard to the, that social media clause. Specialization and recruitment, we, we really don't condone the specialization, meaning that kids are just going to try one sport and overtrain in one sport, or have, or condone our coaches to recruit athletes in their own program and don't allow them to go out for other sports. So, that was a big, hot topic with our, with our coaches, but it's one that is desperately needed. Attendance, remember what came to you the last time, you wanted to move attendance off a student. Currently, right now, in our document, we have, if a student comes in after fourth period, they're still allowed to play in their, in their contest, if they have a contest. So, now, we moved that back. They have to be in by second period, which I believe has come from the Board of Education, which I think is a great standard to have. So, we're moving in regard, we're moving in, in the right direction there as far as attendance. Suspensions, we made another adjustment in suspensions. If a student is in school suspension for a half a day or a full day, they cannot prac, they cannot participate in the contest, but they will be allowed to practice. So, it's another piece that we have. We included a hazing policy, which we do not condone, and we do go over hazing with all of our coaches, but now, we have a, we have a hazing policy in place. We have a procedure for the dismissal from a team, and we included the due process rights for the athletes and the parents in there as well. So, I know that there's, there's a lot of pieces embedded in the document. I don't want to go through it verbatim, but if you have any questions, we would love to get your input and approval so we can start the road to communicating this out to not only our students, but our, but our parents.
Go around, go around again, and we'll start on the other side of the table with Mrs. Ux.
It seems as though it's a lot of changes. I think my biggest concern I hadn't noted was that, um, the, I think that my biggest concern on, on this was just that the way we're pushing this out to the parents as far as, are they understanding that this is new, this is a new system, is there, you know, because this seems like there's going to be some new, some new things here that we are working out some kinks, or no?
Yeah, I think that we do have some new pieces that are in, in this document, but they were all gone through the process of coaches and conversations with coaches and our legal counsel here. And, but I do agree with you that we do have some new pieces. We, you know, obviously, it would have been nice to start in the fall, and then, but we would look to start communicating this out in the winter and the spring, and then start the, the fall of 2018. That could be a good solution for, for us, because I think that many of what is embedded in here, we already have. Now, it's consolidated into one document. So, I don't want you to think that we didn't have rules or regulations. We had them in our student code of conduct, we had them in our parent permission form, and we had them in our code of conduct. So, we had them all over the place, we just consolidated them into one. We do have the new changes that we went over as far as specialization, recruitment, social media, hazing, and I think those are all great pieces to add in to, to the document.
All right. And so, maybe how you're going to push this out, well, you haven't really planned on how it's going to get pushed out?
We have not.
Okay.
Because obviously, we need, we need Board of Ed approval before we move forward with, with, with this.
All right. That was basically my question.
Hi, Dave.
Hello. Long night.
I, I'd like to commend you and your committee. Who, you had coaches, coaches working?
Coaches from modified JV varsity, head coaches, assistant coaches.
Beautiful.
Good group.
Because I'll tell you, when I used to print out my, the, like, kind of PDF that was a little skewed off the page, and had to fill it in, I used to go, like, can't we have something a little bit better? And, you know, having kids who are athletes for so long in Middletown, you know, there were times when things come up over the years. And I was looking for very specific, very specific situations, completely subjectively, I have to say, completely subjectively.
Right.
But I'm not the only one. So, some of the highlights that I would like to commend you on is talking about conflicts in, in making an effort, making sure that our coaches and other organizations, under other school organizations and opportunities are working together to allow students to get the most out of it, of whatever it is that they're doing, although we know that there are limits to that.
Right.
And there are limits. And students have to learn what their limits are. So, having compromises, being able to have compromises, and that it's not a deal breaker for a student to be a student athlete, but also want to be, you know, in the spring play. So, or whatever the case may be.
Absolutely.
So, that was the first thing that just wanted to commend you on, in noting that. I also, squad selection, you read that very carefully, and supporting the athletes, because you, we're, I, I do not want to live in a society where we're coddling our students. I think there has to be fair competition, and kids need to understand where they, where they belong, right? And where they maybe don't, maybe don't have the maximum skills, but what they can do to get the skills that they need. And I think that that addresses how they can become, how they, where they fit in appropriately, and then supporting that. Because, you know, we, not all, not all kids are, are going to be a varsity athlete, even if they've gone through the modified and the JV process, and then, and get to the varsity level, that might not necessarily be a place for them. So, I think that you've addressed that.
I, yeah, we want to be clear to the parents so they understand the levels of competition as they go through the system, from modified to freshman to JV to varsity.
Right.
And, you know, we, I reckon, we recognize as a committee, we could do a better job at that, and I think that's, you know, that's why we put that in there.
Fantastic. And then, the last thing, I also, I didn't have students that got kicked off of teams because we went to visit grandma during winter vacation. We were very lucky. Our coach worked with us, and, but that was an obligation that we had.
Yes.
And so, it was the only time to go as a family, and so, we did that. And I'm a little concerned about the wording of may be, you know, may ultimately because of, because of choices of family vacations.
Yeah, I think that's going to be more like coaching discretionary rules, and how they want to handle those situations.
Excessive, obviously, if you're disappearing for a month, it's very different.
I think it's more set up in regard to that.
Right. It's not that, you know, we're going away during the, the week and a half that we have off, you know, for vacation. Those were, those were the big ones that stood out to me. What I'm, what I still want to see, what I still want to see, although I see the NCAA guidelines in the back, I really would like to advocate for our student athletes to have support in looking out at larger colleges, larger institutions, for participation at the Division 1 and the Division 2 levels. I know that we have a lot of strong Division 3 athletes. I, I mean, I know, I know that our kids are not the, the only athletes out there in the country, and there's a big competition, but they need to know where they stand, if it's a possibility for them, to get scouts, to bring scouts in to our district.
Yeah.
We have incredible facilities, and we're, we just need to, we've got students that who could be amazing athletes as they go out, and use it to their advantage when they get into, to be able to get into college, and use that for scholarships. So, I just want to see that as a support.
Yeah, and I think that the NCAA clearinghouse, clearly, the Eligibility Center, now that they call it, really is, we put that in there for parents and students so they could see Division 1, Division 2, and Division 3. And really, our academic standards are, as we noted from Dr. Eastwood, see, they're all kind of increasing, which is a great thing. We're going to have more of those opportunities, if they're clearing through the Eligibility Center, to go to Division 1, to go to Division 2, or Division 3.
Yes.
As opposed to some of the, where we've had some kids go, fantastic athletes go through the system, and maybe they didn't qualify, they had to go to the junior, junior college circuit, which is okay, or prep school route, which is okay. And we have kids that finally place themselves in Division 1, Division 2, which is, you know, says a lot about the character of those athletes going through our system, about their perseverance. But yeah, I, I agree with you, and I think that we put that in there so that they can understand, because the other part of that is really the head coach, the guidance counselor, and the athletic department working together to kind of get the parent to understand what they need to do to get there.
Right.
So, the standards are in place, you know, the meetings can, can happen, and parents will eventually ask those questions on how can their son or daughter get to Division 1, Division 2, or get a scholarship.
Right.
And we would love to answer those questions, absolutely.
And then, those questions, that conversation has to start at the modified level, because if a, if a child is truly serious about a, about a sport, and the coach has identified them as having some skill, talent, I'll say, I'll use the word talent, that can be honed into a skill, then they need to be helped along the way.
Right, as far as academically, they're getting in, getting into, having the skill athletically, and then having the skill academically, is really the two to really create a blue-chip prospect.
Right. And we have the College and Career Center.
We do, and, and so, we're really going to see more and more of them as we go through, you know, the years, because I think of our, you know, our academic programs are doing extremely well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is terrific. I'm, I'm excited about it.
Thank you.
I didn't get a chance to, excuse me, to really look at it, but it, obviously, it's very, very complete. And I'll look at it if I have any questions, I will send you an email. Thank you.
Thanks, Vince.
Thank you.
Lou?
I think it's a very good job with this, but there is one, one thing that I'm concerned with, is with the Coach's Code of Behavior, number five. refrain from the use of crude or abusive language with players, opponents, officials, or spectators.
Thank you.
the use of crude or abusive language with players, opponents, officials, or spectators. I know sometimes coaches get excited and I had experience with a certain coach.
What page are you on?
Page twenty-five.
Thank you.
That uses very foul language at times with athletes. And I think that should be something that's looked at and maybe enforced a little more strictly. I, I don't want this to just be, you know, language on a, on a piece of paper, but not really enforced. That's my only concern. And I'm not, I don't know who, who's the person or group that looks after these things, but I think sometimes, sometimes should be spent in, in looking at these things as far as coaches' behaviors.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. That's why it's in there. That's why it's in black and white now. So there's no, there's no movement away from that piece. So it's ultimately rests on my shoulders. So if you know something, I'd be glad to work with it.
It's not, it's not a problem any longer, but it, it was a, it was a time it was a problem. But I think some, it, it should be looked at.
I agree.
Thank you.
Maybe so much is emphasized more with the coaches, you know, like reiterate it.
Not so, I mean, foul language is, is.
It's not appropriate in the high school setting.
No.
And I know it's used. I just think it should be looked at, but at least it be, it compresses more on the coaches.
Yeah.
So that it's not used as much or limited, limited.
Well, what about if we, at the end of that sentence, create another sentence? We can amend this document where we say it should be clearly understood that such language and use of language is inappropriate in our sporting and coaching environment.
And it sounds good. I'd, I'd like that.
Okay.
You all right with that, Dave?
Of course.
So while we're at it, can we take a vote on that amendment so that way it's done before you vote on it?
So move.
Second?
Okay.
Hold on, some favor?
Aye.
Can you vote on the amendment?
Okay. I'll make, I'll make that adjustment, absolutely. Thank you. You're welcome.
I am piggybacking on Paula. I know that N, the, is it NCAA? I get those confused.
NCAA eligibility clearinghouse.
Yes. That is, I think that has been a major concern for many years in the high school. If the parent is not proactive and trying to help, which is not always the way, some parents are busy, they're working, whatever. I think that sometimes it can get lost. And so I'm, I was under the impression, and I can be wrong, that the new events coordinator was going to have something to do with this. Was I wrong?
I think so.
Okay. I admit, I was wrong.
I don't think that it's, and the reason I say that I don't think it's that person's responsibility is because that person would not be an expert in understanding the NCAA requirements. Now, if you had said that maybe David could work with somebody in the College and Career Center and that maybe we can have one individual in that center to become a specialist in that area to work with parents, or maybe even both of them, that I could see it appropriately placed in that, in that, that area, the College and Career Center area with those employees.
Okay. We're not in the, yeah, I, I misunderstood and I thought this person was going to help in that also. But that is a very important thing that I think, I don't think we intentionally fail at that, but I think sometimes, you know, like Paula said, it has to be discussed and the student needs to know where they need to go when they're a freshman.
Yeah, that's where we have, that's where we have the issues. It's a freshman, sophomore issues, they, you know, they ultimately, you know, the eleventh, eleventh, twelfth grade, they realize that they're not going to qualify. We have been, we have done a great job with that, but now you have to understand, we have recognized all that, we satisfied all those. Now the NCAA eligibility center's standards have increased.
Right.
So we have to, again, get that communication out.
I, I also want to stress that as part of the counseling program, also in the col, the course catalog, all the courses that are appropriate to get NCAA clearance are so designated in the course catalog.
Oh, they are?
They are.
Yeah, we have our forty-eight H NCAA seal, so the students know.
Well, I didn't realize that either.
Right. So.
See how much I can learn.
Well, we, we did that specifically so parents and students can understand that.
Yes. It has been an issue for many, it has gotten better. I think we're, we're staying ahead of it. But I just, you know, with all the wonderful things we do here, I think if we could maybe work on that a little bit more, not that I'm saying what to do.
Well, there, there is a way to do that. We're coming out with a document that's going to be added to the student's report card. The tracker, it's referred to as a tracker, which shows, it basically shows on, on a semester basis, which would mean in, at the end of the first semester and the end of the year, and for those going to summer school, at the end of summer school, how you are doing in graduating on time. So parents have a list of required courses that they still have to take, how they're doing with all the regents requirements, all of that's in this tracker. I think that it may behoove us to sit with the person that's programming that, to add that as a point of reference on the tracker. So in other words, it's, it has no purpose other than to flag the parent and also flag the counselor that this student may be interested in meeting the NCAA guidelines because they may have an interest in playing in a sport after co, after high school. And I think that we could actually do that. And what it does is it would be a point where flagging, saying, is this student interested in meeting NCAA requirements for collegial participation in sports, or something to that effect? Yes or no? Simple answer, if it's marked yes, then the counselor, when they sit down with the student on an annual basis, can say, well, you also have stated that you have an interest in this. Here's some areas that you may have some concern in because you need to take these courses that are, that are qualified or certified by the NCAA to meet the requirement for once you graduate to play and be cleared for sports at college.
I would really like it if we could try to work on that. I mean, I'm only one person.
No.
But I think it's, I know it's a small piece, but I think it's very important for some of our athletes.
And we can do that.
And we do have a lot of them.
We can put it in the tracker and make it as part of the document, which also would mean that the guidance counselors would be able to see that flagged as part of their, their individual tracker on annual basis.
It could work.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Gomez.
Thank you.
See, Mike, Mike and his staff can do anything.
I know that. They're the IT people. They can do it.
I, I just want to speak along the lines of, of Mr. Pierre. First, let me say, I think it's an outstanding athletic handbook and I commend you and the committee for the great work. I just want to zero in on the sportsmanship policy. I think it sends a very important message to our youth, our rising stars, our athletes, that conduct, character does matter. And the way we conduct ourselves will be the example that we will give to the younger generation. And given that many of our young people, including my generation, has grew up in a culture where many in athletics somewhat fail their admirers, be it to inappropriate conduct, I think it's good that we're setting the record straight to raise a generation of athletes that will be exemplary and models and yes, true heroes for those that will follow their footsteps. So thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Tobias.
Again, Dave, an outstanding job. I do have one question. With regards to the student applicant athletic participation form, don't shoot me, is there any chance that this could also be done in Spanish?
We're going to be working on, on that piece, absolutely.
Because I could see, you know, most of the high school students, I'm sure, could help their parents, but there are, you know, many of our parents that have a language barrier there. I'm not asking about the big document, but more the participation form.
Yes.
Thank you again. Outstanding job.
Bishop Williams.
I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but I, I do want to co-sign, co-sign with, with Paul and with Linda in respect to the, the NCAA eligibility, only because something you mentioned even in our, in our last discussion on the last document we were just talking about, about culture, has always been a culture in Middletown for, for, you know, I'm in my 50s, so I can go back, I can go back at least 40 years of my own knowledge of Middletown having some of the best athletes in the area, but not having the opportunity to, to excel in, in collegiate, collegiate sports. A lot of it, a lot of it, the culture was, some got lost in the, in the process, some of them then, some of them were used in, in sports for high school, but never, never, no one ever took the time to prepare them for the next level academically. And so when I look at this document that's been, that's, that you crafted here, what I see is a bringing together of all of the things that's required for our athletes to, to excel to the next level, just to pay attention to those other pieces that, because to be honest, we have some athletes that are really showing great ability and talent as, as far down as our modified sports level. Some really terrific athletes, but many of them are facing obstacles, obstacles, whether it be, whether it be home, whether it be, whether it be academically, whether it be, whatever it is. And, and just as we do academically, academically, I think it's, it's important to recognize those, those gifts that they have and to try to promote those gifts. So I want to co-sign with them on that and then commend you for, for drafting a great, a great document. This brings together everything that we really are about, but hasn't been in written form. You know, we've just, we, we've, we've believed it and we've, we believed it and we've talked about it, but now we have it down in written form and, and the vision, the vision is seen right here. And, and you can't, you can't argue with, you can't argue with something that's down. And, and it's important, it's important this, that this document be here because not only for the athletes, not only for the coaches, because I agree with, I agree totally with, with Lou. You know, some experiences over the years have been quite interesting. You know, I come from a time when we had Doug Stewart as the wrestling coach, and I don't know if anyone here ever remembers Doug Stewart, but he was six, six eight, six, six nine and was one of the scariest, most scariest individuals and could talk to you any old kind of way. And, but, you know, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, I think it's important for our parents, our parents to get educated to this. We've got to educate our parents as to what our student athletes are expected of our student athletes and what their role is in this team, in this teamwork in order to make sure that our, our student athletes excel as well. So great job. Thank you. You've done wonderful.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things, Dave. I'm glad that we recognize, and we have recognized the concept of the scholar athlete because there are, and I sign off again with everyone who spoke around the table. There have been instances, and I can remember them, where we've emphasized the athlete and not the scholar. The rules set down in our handbooks are for everyone. They're not for just one group of students. And I hope that, and I expect, and we expect that these policies be followed. And I, I'm sure you're going to monitor this and members of your coaching staff are going to monitor it. But it most definitely, as was said, represents a, a lot of hard work on your part and your committee's part. And we're going to schedule this for approval this evening if you'd like to.
Absolutely. If you need time or you need other questions, we, we could, but that's, that was the, the intention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone has? I think we're good on this.
Or, I mean, it could be, you know, if you needed time, it could, it's not super urgent, but obviously, you know, the sooner the better because then we can start the communication and start getting a plan in place for winter or spring or possibly next fall, doing massive communications out this year and then instituting it in 2018. That could work.
Do you have a question?
I'm, I'm good with it now, but my question is, my question is, we passed this tonight and we adopt this tonight, but there's still, there's still the ability for us to, just as we just, just as we just voted on this amendment, there's the ability to be able to vote on amendments in, in the, in the future.
Oh, absolutely. And maybe what you want to do is have the clerk schedule on an annual basis, a revision, a review of and any corrections or modifications based on our experience. So last year, not this current year, but last year, we had a, I want to say at least one very strong example of how this was implemented.
I was going to mention that.
And we learned from that, which is why you see some of the changes that are in there.
That's, that was my thinking when, when I said that, as to our experiences from last year, because we're always going to have new experiences. We try to plan, you try to plan for everything in advance, but, you know, sometimes you just can't. So, okay. I'm good with that.
Dave, one other item. How was it decided that a person to be eligible to play in a, in a game or practice be there by period two? How is that, how is it period?
We have a tenant sheet that comes out every day, so we know when a student comes in, so that we can easily disseminate that. All the coaches are privy to that information, so they, they would be monitoring that with myself.
That's a perfect example of a modification based on experience because last year.
It was four.
We had some experiences where some individuals were coming in, because I think it was three or fourth period last year.
Fourth period.
Fourth period, they were coming in third period or, you know, just before. So they would, they would hold out until that point and then they would scoot into school. So they would miss the first couple of periods. So this, this is a consideration of unfortunately some individuals who took advantage of the fourth period piece, so.
Yeah, there's a recommendation from, from the board which was enacted in this, in this handbook, which is going to help us because the kids will abide by the rule. They'll understand the rule. They understand it now, fourth period, but it's going to be communicated out second period.
Always remembering that our goal is to enable students to graduate with a degree to make them college and career ready. Because the truth of the matter is that very few high school athletes, not only in, not speaking about Middletown, but in the whole country, make professional teams, are good enough to be on professional teams. The number is so miniscule compared to the number of athletes who play in, in, in high school and, and college. So I'm glad to see these revisions. So, I'm glad to see these revisions.
You're absolutely right, John. It should be noted that we do have a lot of, a lot of student athletes and graduates in, playing in college in multiple sports across the board, and to highlight a few, we all know Kendrick Ray, Kennesaw State, is getting ready to go play across seas. Aaron Ray, his brother, is on Southern University. He is going to play against Duke on November 17th. He's going to be on Duke's floor, playing for Southern University. We also have three, two others across seas after they graduated out of Dominican. We have another, the pipeline to Dominican College has been fantastic, and, as well as a lot of Division III schools. And a drop-off from high school to Division III is dramatic, but John, you're absolutely correct, the drop-off to Division I, and then professional's even greater.
Thank you again, Mr. Coles.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Now, we will go on to the action items, unless there's any objection to that.
You ever get a G and H?
No, that's, that's okay. Thank you for bringing it up. See, so, let's go on to number 10, action items. Motion to approve Financial Member Random Number 10 as presented, which was in our board docs. This is, okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carried unanimously. Approval of Special Service Memorandum Number 8. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimously carried. Resolution to authorize emergency replacement of the boiler at Truman Moon Elementary School.
So moved.
Any discussion? Tom, would you like to say a few words on that? And thank you for being proactive and bringing that to our attention.
Good evening. The resolution before you is to replace one of the two boilers at the Truman Moon School. At the last meeting, presented a action item to review all the mechanical electrical systems in that building, and this is one of the problems that we were starting to proceed. We had a contractor do some work last week. We believe we had one section of the boiler that was cracked, and we could replace that. Upon taking the boiler apart, we found that it's failed throughout. So, we do need this boiler to get through the winter. We do have one currently running in the building.
So, we should be up and running by the time the cold weather?
Yeah. Once we get to a much colder weather, we'll need both boilers.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Now, we come to action on a student disciplinary appeal. I'm going to read this. Resolved that the Board of Education upholds the superintendent's decision made at the superintendent's disciplinary hearing regarding student 1500527, following consideration by the Board of Education, the appeal made by the parent slash guardian. You have a motion on that?
Second.
Now, we've discussed this in executive sessions, not for public discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Another action on student disciplinary appeal. Resolved that the Board of Education upholds a superintendent's decision made at the superintendent's disciplinary hearing regarding, regarding student 1501405, following consideration by the Board of Education of the appeal made by the parent slash guardian.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, this was discussed in executive session.
Yes, John, can I just make a comment about that, please?
Go ahead.
I just want to say that I don't want others to think that there was not a discussion. We had a very, very serious discussion, and we do appreciate and we listen to the input from the parents.
Yes, we do. Number F, approval of an election inspector. Motion to approve John Young, Sr., as an election inspector for the 2017-2018 school year. Mr. Gomez, who's second? Mr., Mrs. Blumenau. Any discussion?
Yes, John. You know, my favorite, Dr. Eastwood, still looking to have just one site for voting. That's all I want to say on the vote.
You want to comment on that?
Have we thought about that, though, seriously, for the December vote, that it might be more convenient just to have it in one place?
The problem with switching back and forth is people get confused, and typically, the ones that call us about these issues, I'll put it as my age. So, yes, so, I, I think that that, switching back and forth, it would be problematic, and two, we've also looked into this possibility, and a single site, there is no single site that we have that would manage the traffic that would be required to do a site like this.
I'll still, I won't give up.
I mean, it's, it's, it's an excellent idea if the mechanics could be, the nitty-gritty could be worked out on it.
Right, yes.
Let's see, we had a, we have a motion on the floor, and a, we had a, we had a second, and we've had a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Young. Number G. Approval of Middletown, this is, we're going to add G.
You have to, let's amend the action items to add G and H.
May we have a motion to amend the action items to obtain G and H?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, number G. We're looking to approve the Middletown School District Interscholastic Athletic Handbook.
So moved.
Now, we've had discussion on this. Any further discussion?
That's with the amendment, correct?
Yes.
With the amendment, sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations on that. G and now H. Approval of the Middletown School District Wellness Policy.
So moved.
Second.
Bishop Williams and Mrs. DeBison. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Coles. Now, we come to the second opportunity to address the board. Any takers?
You have to admire our audience for sticking it out.
Yeah. Any of you fellas, you want to come up? Come on, you want to come up and say something?
No, they just want to signature.
They need our signatures for, for the government.
Oh, you need the signatures, okay.
Come on, come on, give a signature.
It won't be, it won't be long. Just give us a couple more minutes, okay? We'll sign, anybody wants to sign up?
Ken's going to sign.
Dr. Eastwood has signed, all right. Any other opportunity, anybody else want to address the board? Go ahead.
It's getting late, we understand.
We are students, well. I am Laura Williams. I'm the mother of this young man over here. I moved to Middletown 13 years ago. I found the town on the internet. I was looking for somewhere to buy a house and to have a quiet life, but I work in Manhattan, which is quite a trip from here every day. So, I found Middletown, like, oh, you know, this is far, but it's a sacrifice I'll make for my child, because I don't think I could raise him in the Bronx. I looked at the school district there, and it was just, you know, it was tough. And I have to say, it was the best move I made to come here for my son's sake, you know, for him to have a good school life, and so far, it's been great, and he's been doing very well, and I have to congratulate Dr. Eastwood, you know, for, for this wonderful school district. And, you know, that's what I just wanted to say. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
And you've got a great name, too. You've got a great name.
Oh, thank you. Evergreen Shrub. Yes, last name, right, right, same last name, yes.
Williams, William Strong, William Strong.
Now, let's go to committee reports. Mr., Mr. Crescendo, approve of the external auditor's report.
Okay.
I'm going to read this, and then you can discuss this if you want.
What are you going to read?
Be it resolved that-
All right, before you do that, John, before you do that, I just want to make a comment first.
Yeah, I know, we'll have discussion after I read this.
Okay.
No?
I thought I was going to do it.
Go ahead.
So what?
You're, you're right. So, so what is right?
That was good.
Here, here, Vinnie, come on up here and take the mic. Go ahead.
Mr. President, provita. Forgot what I was going to say. No, at the last board meeting, I gave an audit committee report about our meeting with the external auditor, Cooper Arius LLP, and they did an audit of the district's financial statements for the school year ending June 30th, 2017. The audit doesn't find what's done correctly. They look for minor, anything, they look for anything that can be corrected, and they found virtually nothing. There were some very minor issues, and they were discussed with the appropriate personnel. So, that being said, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the external auditor's report as presented at the October 19th, 2017, meeting of the Board of Education. Need a motion to approve the report.
So moved.
So, discussion?
Good job, Vince.
Thank you. My moment in the sun.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Passes.
Good job.
Okay, let's go on here. We've had a discussion, a great discussion on the conference. Nice job, and thanks again for attending. Now, we'll go to committee reports, and-
Actually, I just want to say one thing about the conference.
Go ahead, John.
We talked about, we talked, we talked about the conference from the school district, and I know it's late, and we're going to get out of here, so I'm going to be very brief, and Paul has got, got what she, what she has to say, but I do want to say, most of you know that I am a member of the New York State Caucus of Black School Board Members, which is a wonderful, wonderful organization that was established in 1984. One of the main resolutions that we, that we, we agreed, we agreed on to support even the last three years, passed during this conference, and Paul is going to talk about it some more because she was there, but I'm excited, because the New York State, New York State Caucus of Black School Board Members now has a voting seat on the NISBA Board, something that they have fought for, for, for quite a few years, and so, I do want to congratulate all of the members of the caucus, specifically graduate Ms. Joyce Brown, who's the executive director of the caucus, and Mr. Michael Jamie, who is the president of the caucus, for their hard, diligent work in moving to this point where now that, that, that particular organization within NISBA now has a voting seat. They were extremely excited about Middletown. I shared with them our, our documents here, I shared with them documents, they're extremely excited and looking forward to possibly coming and visiting Middletown. They would like at some point to hold a regional meeting, one of the regional meetings here in, in the area, and taking the opportunity to be able to tour and to see what Middletown has done. Middletown is making impact, and so, I just wanted to share that part of it, because I am a member of that organization, and I would encourage any of our board members to be a member of it, be a, be a member of that, of the, of the caucus. They're, they're doing great work, so, thank you.
Thank you, Bishop Williams. Mr. Blumenau, you want to add anything here?
The purpose of voting, what, I'm the voting delegate, and the purpose of New York State School Boards Association is to advocate on our behalf at the state level, legislature, state senate, to help us, we're giving, as the New York State School Boards Association, we're giving our advocates guidance as to what we want to see happen. We're not passing legislation, we're not voting, we're not voting on policies, we're voting on direction and giving direction to, to our leaders. And, so, being able to, as we, as I sat in, in this field of, I think, there probably were about 1,000 attendees at the conference this year up in Lake Placid, Lake Placid. Terrific conference, but you really can see that it is, it's, it's just really, there really is not a strong representation of people of color. And it's almost to the point of being, for me, after five years of seeing it, uncomfortable, because I come from a district where we're so multicultural, and we're advocating for all of our students, for equity, obviously, and funding, and making sure that we're providing everyone with equal opportunity. So, this, this particular motion, this particular goal of getting a, a member of the Black Caucus for Black School Board Members on the actual board, was a goal to have a voice on the board. We vote on resolutions, I don't have to go through all of them, you can research them and see them, which resolutions are going to be supported, but this particular change in the bylaws allowed for a member of the Black Caucus to actually sit on the Board of Directors. And so, that was really major, because that is a, a voice that represents a, really represents a large portion of our community. So, I was very happy to see that pass, and last year, we had tried to get it passed again. It was very close, it needed to pass by two-thirds vote, because it is a, it was a bylaw change, so, it was, there was a lot of discussion on it back and forth, because there isn't any other segment of the, segment of the population that has their own seat on that board. It's elected people. But you can see, the board is not of color, so I think that it's a wonderful opportunity to make sure that that voice is heard. Some of the other resolutions, very important to support the fact that our teachers should be coming out of school with the right education. We want to make sure that our, the teachers that are coming out of colleges are, are being educated to what the standards are going to be, so that, you know, when they come into their first jobs, they're somewhat prepared for what the standards are going to be and the, the expectations of the school districts. We're also, we also, one of the other things that, of course, fighting for fair funding, our continued advocacy for fair funding, eliminate, the other one that stood out was eliminating the tax cap. So, all of these are, are going to be focuses for our advocates to go and educate the legislature about and the state about. As far as the, the rest of the conference, great presentations, as always. Pastor Williams and I ended up meeting at the same places, because I think that's where, you know, we all, we, we've done it in the past, where we've gone through the book and go, okay, what are you going to go to? What are you going to go to? And this time, the featured speakers were really impressive, so that's where we stuck the featured, the featured presentation. So, I want to thank- presentation. So, I want to thank the board for the opportunity for, to represent Middletown. Hope to do it again in the future. Thank you.
Bishop Williams, you want to add?
Poor Bishop Williams, didn't sleep.
I, I, just, just as a side note, I didn't sleep the whole conference. I didn't get a chance to sleep because Taryn found me a room way out in the woods, all by myself, by a lake with canoes and-
On Friday the 13th.
And, and, and as I, as I was laying in the, in this cabin, all I could hear was the Jason music. And, and you know, the black guy is the first guy to get killed in all those movies. So, you know, I was, I was, I, I didn't sleep the whole time, so.
I, I offered my couch because I had a beautiful room overlooking Lake Placid.
Thank you, Taryn.
Conference was in Lake Placid, New York, which is like way up there. And, and I was 12 miles away from Lake Placid, another 12 miles north in the, in the boondocks. And so, you know, I thought there were bears outside my window looking through the vines. And it was just, it was just really scary. And, and my, and my friends didn't make me feel any comfortable. They were talking about serial killers and I'm like, wow, thank you. So, I didn't sleep at all, but I had, I, I had a great conference. My, my five-hour energy drink and coffee went a long way.
Well, I think you're going to be happy next year. It's in New York City.
Yes, yes.
I'll be very happy.
If I might add, we were already invited by the School Board Association to present next year at the conference in New York City. So we've been asked, as a result of our presentations and the, the displays that we had on the conference floor.
Committee reports, any other committee reports?
You addressed it earlier.
Mr. Gomez, you're going to have your hands full with the Fair Funding Committee.
Yes, I intend to-
Because of the governor's comments that we're running a deficit, it's going to be a huge deficit this year.
And I intend to call a meeting of the committee soon.
Okay, good. And so you, we're going to have to do some work. And also because of the, what we hear from Washington, that state and local taxes might not be able to be deducted from the federal tax return. This is going to have tremendous implications, I think, on education. So, good for you. So, any other committee reports?
The audit committee is going to meet this coming Thursday, the 26th, is it? Yeah. I won't be able to be there. I'll be out of, out of the state actually for the entire week. So, I think Mr. Perino said he would take charge. Appreciate it.
You might want to fly back.
No.
For the meeting, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're done with that. Now, whoa, whoa, whoa. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, John, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Any discussion? Who's the second? Okay, Mr. Crescendo, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You want to stay?
I think, I think, I think we all-
The next, next meeting is November 2nd. So we'll be meeting November 2nd, right here, hopefully. You guys have to, you need anything signed? You got, okay, come on up.